During the current state of emergency due to COVID-19, council members will be participating online and the public will not be able to physically attend today's meeting. To participate in the public comment period, please call now at 818-238-3335. Members of the public may speak for up to three minutes depending upon the number of speakers.
Everyone, we are ready to start our meeting tonight. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Good afternoon and welcome to a presentation in closed session meeting of the Burbank City Council on Tuesday, April 5th, 2022. Mr. City Attorney McDougal, would you please state the items on the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, good evening, Vice Mayor and council members. This evening, the City Council will be meeting in closed session following the presentation to discuss conference with labor negotiator under Government Code Section 54, 957.6. Labor negotiator is Ms. Betsy McClinton, Management Services Director, and the organizations include the Burbank City Employees Association, Burbank Management Association, International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, Burbank Firefighters, International Association of Firefighters, Local 778, Burbank Firefighters Chief Officers Unit, Burbank Police Officers Association, Unrepresented Managers, Z Group, Executives, City Attorney and City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Madam City Clerk, do we have any callers online for public comment on the presentation and closed session items only?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor. I have been checking and so far, we do not have any callers, so it is safe to go ahead and close this part of the meeting. Thank you.
All right, thank you. There being no further public comment, I now declare the public comment period closed. We have one presentation today before council moves to closed session meeting. City's Racial Equity and Diversity Council Subcommittee received this presentation on February 14th, 2022, Valentine's Day. Councilmember Springer and I recommended that the National League of Cities Race Equity and Leadership Team also present at a public city council meeting. I welcome Judy Wilkie, Assistant City Manager, to introduce the presenters. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Talamontes, Vice Mayor Anthony and City Council members. I'm Judy Wilkie with the City Manager's Office and I'm honored to be here to introduce our presentation from the National League of Cities REAL team. As Mayor Talamontes mentioned, our Racial Equity and Diversity Council Subcommittee recently met to consider a proposal from NLC to move toward the city's commitment to advancing racial equity in our city organization and community. Staff in the council subcommittee have been working with NLC over the past six months to create a suitable path forward. To speak about this path and present the proposal, we are happy to have with us this evening, Shontae Byers, who is the Senior Executive Director of Member and Partner Engagement, Shawna Davey, the Director of the REAL program, Melissa Jones, City and State League Contracts for the REAL program, and Daryl Edwards, Senior Specialist of City Engagements for the REAL program. We look forward to your questions and feedback, City Council. Should the council be comfortable with the concepts of this proposal, it is staff's intention to return to a future council meeting requesting council approval of a contract with NLC so we can begin the work of learning, assessing, and pursuing a more equitable Burbank. And with that, I turn this over to Shawna Davey to begin the presentation this evening.
Thank you so much, Judy. And as we're pulling up the slides, I just want to say a thank you to Mr. Mayor, to the council members, and to all of the staff that made today happen. We really appreciate the opportunity to come and share a little bit of information with you all, and we're looking forward to hopefully engaging with you in the future. So with that, I'm going to jump right in and ask Daryl to please click to the next slide. We just want to give you a little bit of background just in case this may be helpful to the discussion about our organization as well as our department. So, NLC's mission, many of you all may know, is to strengthen local leadership, influence federal policy, and drive innovative solutions. At REAL, within NLC, our goal is to create equitable cities where everyone thrives, including people of color, by helping cities, towns, and villages build their internal skill and capacity to apply racial equity to their policies, practices, and procedures. And we're so excited that this is a journey that the City of Burbank is interested in continuing and embarking on in partnership with us. We can go to the next slide, Daryl? So we just want to name that we have some partners in this work. We're not doing this in isolation or by ourselves, and we are partnered with many organizations, but most importantly, those that you see on the screen. And this allows us to bring to bear the best and most promising practices for advancing racial equity, and these partnerships have helped to strengthen our work and broaden our network. Next slide, Daryl? We use our partner GEAR's approach to normalize conversations about race, organize inside and outside of government, to build internal infrastructure that helps us both meet the needs of community, especially those who have been most impacted by racial inequities, as well as do the work of change management that's necessary inside of government to help sustain efforts to improve outcomes for all, including people of color. We operationalize racial equity by using things like a racial equity tool to help us understand who is currently being impacted and who is experiencing burden due to our historic or our current policies, practices, and procedures, and who is experiencing benefit, and how can we ensure that everyone experiences benefit within our community? And finally, visualizing what a racially equitable community would look and feel like. We believe this is one of the most important components, especially for elected officials, to really cast a vision for a racially equitable Burbank. What would it mean for us to create a future that our children can live in where we no longer have to have these conversations, but everyone is experiencing excellent conditions of well-being and thriving? The way that we do this is through workshops, webinars, coaching, and technical assistance in the form of contracts, learning communities, and general education. Sometimes that means working with an individual city, and other times that means bringing groups of cities together to go through a learning process. We also provide general education to NLC members, often through our annual conferences that hopefully many of you have participated in. And we believe the best way to do this is by creating an interactive applied learning experience that supports people in taking practical next steps to advance racial equity. So we really think it's critical for folks to learn how they can put things into practice the next day versus just understanding the theory and the history. We can go to the next slide, Daryl? And sometimes when we receive calls, we sometimes hear from folks to say, "We really would love to do work on equity, but can you come in and can you talk about equity without talking about race?" And we acknowledge that actually that's not something that is going to be as helpful to the conversation because race is baked into the formation of our country. And it's something that is so important for us to address so that we can achieve improvement and outcomes for all people. Race impacts every facet of our lives, from infant mortality to life expectancy, and we also recognize that we can learn to address other forms of marginalization, whether that be ableism, or sexism, or ageism, by understanding how we can address institutional and structural racism. At the same time, we know that specificity matters. We have to develop and design strategies that seek to address the specific issue that we're focusing on. So while we can learn lessons from addressing institutional and structural racism, we know that we need different strategies to address issues such as ableism than the strategies that we would use to address classism, or different strategies to address racism than the strategies we would use to address sexism, for instance. We can go to the next slide, Daryl? We also acknowledge that race matters and that one of the things that we think is so critical to get across is that none of us created the inequities we see today, and we all have a responsibility to address and solve them. We all benefit from the work of racial equity, no matter our background, and so important to underscore, we can't solve something if we can't have a conversation about it. So putting things to the side, not moving forward into what might be a difficult or uncomfortable conversation, won't actually allow us to build the skills that we need to address the issues that we see in our communities and hopefully help lead to improved outcomes for all people, including people of color. And so, we can go to the next slide, Daryl? In the proposal, what you'll see are two approaches. The first approach is on the screen. It would begin with a kickoff meeting and some opportunities to connect with folks that have been doing diversity, equity, and inclusion work within the city, to learn from their efforts. Also, an opportunity to hear from department directors, any questions they may have. And then we would move into providing service workshops to the elected officials, both our Leading for Racial Equity Workshop and our Communicating Effectively About Race Workshop. We believe that it's very important to start with leadership, and after providing those workshops to the elected body, we would then move to the leadership within the organization, so department directors and the like. And that would also be our Leading for Racial Equity Workshop. We would work with Judy and others to help develop an Equity Core Team that's made up of the breadth and depth of the organization, so representatives, employees from every department, as well as different levels of leadership, to support a sustainable effort so that this work continues to move forward regardless of any changes that are experienced with the city. And that Core Equity Team would go through our introductory workshop, Normalizing Racial Equity, as well as Organizing for Racial Equity and Operationalizing Racial Equity. The Organizing and Operationalizing Racial Equity Workshops are focused much more heavily on using a racial equity tool to allow data to inform the strategies that are being developed. And those two workshops are also an opportunity to really focus heavily on community engagement, to support the staff in thinking about how are they engaging the community currently? What can they do to engage community members more broadly, more consistently, especially those that are most impacted by racial inequities? And how can we build up additional infrastructure within the organization to sustain community engagement efforts in the future? The final workshop is our Train the Trainer, and this would be an opportunity to support both Core Equity Team members as well as others who may be in HR or who might be in other departments where training is provided on an ongoing basis, where they can learn how to deliver the Normalizing Racial Equity Workshop. That puts you all in the best position to build your internal skill and capacity. We, in a way, want to put ourselves out of a job. We know that we cannot provide this service to 3,000 organizations across the country, 3,000 local municipalities, and so it's really important to us that we are supporting you as a city in building up your internal skill and capacity so that you can provide this important training to new employees as well as some of your partner organizations that you're working with, boards and commissions, for instance. Moving from there, we will be providing coaching and technical assistance throughout the process. Some of the coaching and technical assistance is focused really heavily on the Core Equity Team as they go through the Organizing and Operationalizing Workshops that are focused primarily on change management and the application of the racial equity tool, as well as the development of the Racial Equity Action Plan. And the culminating symposium is a really incredible opportunity to bring everyone back together, to have members represent the council, to have department directors present, to have the mayor present, to showcase the work that the Equity Core Team has done over that period of time, to share some of their recommendations in terms of strategies that could help to advance racial equity in the short term and the long term, and to share a draft racial equity action plan for both the leadership within the organization to approve and review, as well as in some cases, some cities also like to take it before their elected body and have their elected body vote on that racial equity action plan. This serves both as a North Star to you all as a coordinated unit, internal and external, and it also serves as an accountability measure to your community to say, "This is what we're committing to. This is how we are moving forward, and we're going to update you on our progress on an annual basis through this document." Finally, you'll notice the strategy calls. That's an opportunity for us to connect with Judy and others on a regular basis to problem-solve, to strategize, and to address anything that might need to be addressed throughout the entire process. Some of the outcomes that can be expected through Option A are a draft racial equity vision statement, ideas for how to continuously normalize conversations about race within the city, a narrative summary of those racial equity tool pilot projects. So for each of the pilot projects, there will be recommended community-driven, data-informed strategies, both short and long term, a curriculum that you'll be able to use with new employees and your partner organizations, and a draft racial equity action plan. So that is the first option that you'll note in the proposal. We can go to the next slide, Daryl? So Option B is a little bit of a pared-back version of Option A. It does still start off with the kickoff meeting, also looks at the creation of the Core Equity Team, focuses on providing the Core Equity Team with the Normalizing Workshop as well as a combined workshop on organizing and operationalizing. And also includes the Train the Trainer to allow you all to still move forward with the focus on building that internal skill and capacity to keep the work sustainable, includes some coaching and technical assistance, as well as those strategy calls. And outcomes for Option B include ideas for normalizing conversations about race, a narrative summary of those racial equity tool pilot projects with the recommended community-driven, data-informed strategies, and the curriculum that you can use with your new employees and partner organizations. So you'll notice that the Racial Equity Vision Statement and the Racial Equity Action Plan were not mentioned in Option B as a part of the outcomes. We can go to the next slide, Daryl? We just wanted to give a quick picture of the racial equity tool that we use as a part of those organizing and operationalizing workshops. What we're focusing on is not looking at a problem and moving straight into strategy. This process allows us to take a step back and say, "What is the vision for our community within the City of Burbank? What is it that we really want for our community 10 years, 20 years from now? What are the conditions of well-being that we hope to see for our children, for our children's children?" To analyze the data and say, "Who is already experiencing some of those things and who isn't? And how are we going to measure our success? How will we measure whether or not we have achieved those desired results or have achieved that vision?" And then let us build and strengthen our relationships with the folks who are not experiencing those conditions of well-being. How can we do that even better? And then and only then, after we have analyzed the data and engaged those most impacted by racial inequities, do we start the process of developing strategy. Then we move into the development of an implementation plan, and finally focus on communicating with all parties, all stakeholders, and thinking about how we will evaluate our efforts over time. So that's just a really quick hit on the racial equity tool. As you can see, we have several workshops that focus on the racial equity tool, so I tried to drill that down in a very small touch point, but we go into much greater detail. I just wanted you all to have a quick picture of it. So with that, I'd like to turn it back over to Judy and others to see if there may be questions that we can help to answer or clarity that we can provide, and thank you all again for the opportunity to share with you.
Thank you, Shawna. I will turn it over to the mayor, actually, to see if any of the council have questions, comments, or feedback that they would like to present.
You know, I'd like to thank you before we get into any questions. I'd like to thank you, Ms. Byers, Ms. Davey, Ms. Jones, and Mr. Edwards for your time and presentation. And like we said in the Subcommittee, or in the Committee of the Council, myself and Councilmember Sharon Springer, this was very good presentation as far as we were concerned, and that's the reason we encourage staff to move it on to presentation of the whole city council. I don't have any... Can we take those slides down so I can see my colleagues? There we go. Thank you very much. So colleagues, you've heard the presentation. Any comments, questions, concerns by anyone? Councilmember Springer, you want to start out since you were a member of the Subcommittee with me?
Yeah. Well, I just would like to say that I think it's very important to move forward with this, with this training, and because I think it will be good for us and for our community and set some goals and implement them, and so that we do have a roadmap for five, 10, 15, 20 years and what we expect, so everybody is included moving forward.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Schultz?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Thank you so much to National League of Cities for being here. Phenomenal presentation. I agree with my colleagues. This is something that we need to do. I had one question going back to Option A. Between the two, Option A to me seems to certainly be the better approach, and you might have mentioned it, so I'm sorry if I missed it, but I see that the Leading and Communicating Workshops, those are both given to the elected officials, but if I'm seeing right, only the Leading Workshops given to the department heads, but not the Communicating Workshop? And I was just wondering, I'm sure there's a reason for that. I was just wondering if you could speak to that?
Absolutely. That is something that we'd be happy to change if it's something that the city thinks would be really supportive and helpful. One of the things that we've noticed is that often elected officials really do need some additional support in sharing, articulating why this work is important, why this work is critical, and supporting the city in having those conversations. We do a little bit on Communicating Effectively About Race in the longer version of the Normalizing Workshop with the Core Equity Team, so they will get some of that information as a part of the Normalizing Workshop, but we don't currently have it slated for department directors. We'd be happy to add that if that's of interest.
Well, I would defer to my colleagues, the mayor and councilmember Springer, they've spent more time with this, but I think what you said is absolutely right. It's not just understanding the inequities, it's being able to talk about it, to articulate, to actively listen. So to me, having some sort of, you know, communication workshop for the department heads would first blush seem to be a good thing to incorporate, and maybe that's already baked into those other components you talk about. But from this council member's perspective, I think we can always use a refresher, all of us, on good communication.
Thank you. Anyone else? Vice Mayor Anthony?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for this presentation. Yeah, I'm comfortable with Option A, and I too would like to see the Communicating section added to the department heads as well. I think it's important. And then lastly, I would just say, you know, it's so important to have a system in place where we take a look at our blind spots, you know? I talk a lot about blind spots when I talk to folks who don't understand why we're doing so many things about, you know, equity and intersectionality. You know, it's so hard to see in your blind spot, and that's literally why you got to get somebody else to show you, you know? You don't know what you don't know, you can't see what you can't see, and so I'm really excited for this program, and thank you for coming here today.
Councilmember Frutos?
Yeah, thank you. Again, I'm echoing what my colleague said to the folks from the National League. My only comment would be, can we include the chairperson and vice chairpersons of our various boards and commissions as they do represent the appointments of the city? And they're, you know, our advisory board to the council, but they play a critical role, especially in the diversity and inclusion of members within the community. They're what I call the tentacles of information. I like to see them to be a part of, you know, approach Option A. Those are just my two cents for the conversation. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Mr. City Attorney, Mr. City Manager? Judy? No? Okay.
No, nothing to add.
All right. Thank you. Madam City Clerk, do you have anything to add?
No, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I think this is a great, great program, and I highly support it.
Excellent. Yes, you know, thank you to National League of Cities for putting this together, and obviously the presenters, I thank you already going forward, and I too would like to see Option A with a couple of the caveats that were included by my colleagues. I don't know if, like Councilmember Schultz says, if they're already incorporated in various areas that we haven't focused on today, but if they're not, they should be included. And Councilmember Frutos, excellent advice. Were the boards and commissions going to be all included in the presentation? Judy, do we know?
I don't... For sure, we had talked about the fact that we would want to include a lot of our boards and commissions in the community engagement portion, but I hear what the council's saying, and we will work with NLC to come up with something. It may be an added couple of workshops, it sounds like, that would be more inclusive of maybe all of our boards and commissions if that's doable, or at least an invitation to include as many of them that would like to be there. I think that we could work that out. It would just be an additional, you know, workshop, probably a couple of workshops to get through. We have, you know, about 100 or so board, commission, and committee members, so we could find a way to engage them.
I would like to extend it to all board members, obviously, that everybody can benefit from this, and, you know, moving forward, because they're the heart of the community. They represent not only us on the various boards and commissions, but they represent the community as well, and they come from all various segments, and diversity is there. So I think if we can include them, I'm sure there's going to be an extra cost, probably. I hope not, Ms. Byers, but anyway, you'll discuss that with Judy and the city manager, see how we move forward. But if there's anything else, I just want to thank you very much for the... Go ahead, Mr. Hess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before you close, I just wanted to recap, so we will take your input now with the different changes, work with National League of Cities on coming up with a proposal agreement that we would bring back to you and the full council for approval in the coming weeks, and most likely that would also include a budget request as well. So I know, hopefully, you know, being National League of City members, hopefully we'll get a nice rate out of that, and... But other than that, we'll get it back to you as soon as we can, so you guys could vote on it and we could get started.
You know, I just want to ask a question. I know as mentioned several times about the race mattering, and race is baked into our foundation, and I agree with it. So it's taken years, years to get to this point, and so I don't see it, you know what I mean, just turning the switch on after we get all this education and changing our attitudes. I just hope it works, and I'm looking forward to it working. The more education we get, the better decisions we will be making forward, and the members of the community as well. So education's always good, and so I appreciate what you're presenting to us, and moving forward, we'll see how the budget goes, we'll see how it's presented by our city manager, but I'm looking forward to further more presentations and more education. Anything from Ms. Byers? You, anything else? You, anything else on closing?
You know, I was going to pass it to Shawna to close, but what I'll say quickly, Mayor, one, thank you all so much for giving us this opportunity to connect with you again. We really believe in the work that we do, and we really believe in the power of local government and local leadership, and all of you have not only shown that tonight, but you have continuously shown that throughout your terms of leadership and how much you care for your communities, and it says a lot towards that by just hearing the comments and the questions that you guys presented with us today. So we take this very seriously. We don't take it lightly at all, and just want to say thank you to each and every one of you for your time, because it's very valuable, and thank you for just even entrusting us with being able to present this information to all of you. So truly appreciate that from my end, and I will kick it over to Shawna Davey, excuse me, to close us out.
Thank you, Shontae. And as Shontae said, we really appreciate each and every one of you, your time, the commitment that you've made to your community and to this effort, to this work, the endurance that you have given to keep this on the table and to keep pushing it forward. We know that that is not always an easy task, and so we appreciate the fact that you continue to work to ensure that everyone in your community is thriving. So thanks again, and we look forward to connecting to follow up on those next steps.
Mr. Mayor, if you could just bring your grandson next time. I mean, you spoiled us the last time we gave you the presentation, and then you don't give us the opportunity to see his beautiful face. So we'll be looking forward to that in the future as well, okay?
Excellent, thank you. Will do. Thank you very much. Have a good evening. We will now proceed to a closed session meeting. We will reconvene the city council meeting at 6:00 PM. The public is invited to view the meeting online or by television, and will be able to provide public comment by calling in directly to the council meeting at 818-238-3335. The televised portion of closed session is now over.
Thank you. We're going to wait just a minute to turn off the Granicus recording.
I'm checking on it.